So folks, the procedure is because we're recording this, there actually is a camera going this way, camera going this way. So you, I don't think that's going on you, so you can misbehave there. But if you want to talk to the board, we just fuck here because there's a microphone here. But it's also kind of just, I'm gonna slide it over here, of course. So, yeah.
I'm Gray Culver. My son's Colton. Mr. DeCarlo is very first with Colton in his class and the work that he's done at the NRC. So kudos to Mr. DeCarlo on that. I'm also the middle school football coach this year. We brought back the program. Which, working with Mr. Bowers, we're trying to bring back more sports to Butte Falls. We're gonna try to also bring back the Skyline Conference, which it was way back when. So we don't have to play likes of Eagle Point, Shady Cove, White Mountain, you know, these big four or five A schools. Because we can't compete, only having eight to 10 kids on a team. It's not fair to our kids. In the last two years, our football team hasn't won a game. You know, I end up having, send three kids in one game to the ER. So size makes a difference. We can't have this. And that being said, is we are losing kids here at Butte Falls. I know for a fact, three kids are gonna be coming out of Butte Falls and going to Eagle Point come spring break. Those are three athletes that we're leaving. Two of them is because we have no trades up here. We have no trade schools up here. They want trades. And trades is the future for our kids. Everybody knows, you can't do nothing if you don't have trades. Construction, welding, plumbing, building, you name it, we gotta have it. Mechanics. Everything breaks. This is a logging town. Gotta have mechanics. Next year, we're probably gonna be losing the Hammond boys. They're gonna go to Eagle Point. Because again, there's no trades. How are we supposed to recruit kids to come to Butte Falls if we don't have anything to offer? My son, Colton, is probably gonna go to Eagle Point next year. Because there are no trades in high school. If we are gonna be a computer, competitive community, sports, we have to recruit kids. The only way to recruit kids to this school district is by giving them something that they could shoot for. Something that's gonna give them hope for the future. High school's supposed to prepare them for the future. If we don't have any trades, what are they gonna do? Flip burgers at McDonald's? You know, and we also have some issues with some teachers. I know my son, Colton, he suffers from dyscalculia, which is a learning disability when it comes to math. We have a seventh or eighth grade math teacher that does eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12. Eighth grade is a total different realm than 12-year-olds. That teacher cannot sit here and grade eight-year-olds the same way as a 12-year-old can, 12th grade. There needs to be a teacher, broken up, that could work with the kids. Colton has come home to me and says, Dad, I'm lost. She will not work with us. We ask for help, and all we get is like, do it on your IXL. Now how fair is that when you got 10 kids in a class, but a teacher's not, is refusing to work with our kids? Eight, nine, and 10. Because I've also got feedback from prior students that have long since graduated, they had issues too. So we have to have a better understanding when it comes to mathematics. The United States is last in the world when it comes to mathematics. Mr. Carlton, you're running business. You gotta know math. You gotta know books. How much fuel do your trucks take? That's simple, basic math. If they can't figure that out, what good are we gonna do? Math goes with trades. Math goes with every job we're gonna send our kids out. I would love to see the board try to implement something that's gonna help out every class when it comes to mathematics. Steven, is this common core math? I don't know about you, but I'm lost. I mean, I remember two plus two was four, not a five-step equation just to get four. Math is supposed to be simple. Let's keep it simple. We gotta keep schools simple for our kids, so we maintain their attention. Only way to have their attention is by giving them something to shoot for. Sports, scholastics, trade schools. We bring those three things back, we'll have an influx of kids coming to this school. That's what we need. I don't wanna see kids go to another school, because we can't offer them something. Plan it simple. At this point, I was hoping to have kids for our high school football team. If I'm losing athletes, not gonna have a football team. That's up to you guys to figure out how we're gonna maintain these kids here, how we're gonna draw them back. And I really encourage you to figure out a way to keep these kids here, and find some way to give these kids a goal to shoot for: trades. One gentleman says he wishes there was welding. You know, you and I've had a talk about welding. If we don't have welding, where are they gonna go learn? Nowhere. Eagle Point. You employ welders for your business, right? Where do they get their start? High school. Ms. Gorman has an automotive shop now. She wants to bring kids over. Start working, what we call CMEs, for high school kids on automotives. But if we can't offer that up at this school, what good are we doing? We gotta go back to the basics, back when I was going through school in the 90s, and Mr. Long was one of my teachers. We gotta have woodshop. We gotta have welding, drafting, architect, automotive, stuff to maintain interest. NRC is a great thing, but we gotta go above and beyond that. We gotta give the kids something else to shoot for. Plan it simple. I wanna continue with sports. But if we don't have kids, we can't have sports. If we don't have sports, we don't have a school district. Plan it simple. Thank you.
Nick Rogers, school here, multi-generations. I've seen nothing but Butte Falls School District fail, year and time and time again. We pulled our kids out, do some, some things that had happened. So my question to you guys is, why is prospect classrooms full? You know, what, where have you gone wrong? Is it the administration? Disciplining kids? And whenever threats considered verbal abuse? That's my question. So maybe, take a look at our neighbors that are doing well. Kids are in school. Kids wanna go to school. My kids don't wanna go to your guys' school, and it's, it's sad. So take a good, good look and figure out where you guys are going wrong, because somebody is. So whether that be resigning or what, we need to fix it. So, and that's on you guys. Thank you. Yeah. Yep. So when there's a threat to harm somebody, how is that considered verbal abuse? And how can they do that nine times before anything's done? Yep? So whether that's handed down from the state, or that's your guys' policy, something needs to happen. No, not in the fact that kids need to, you know, kids should wanna go to school, especially young kids, and they should feel safe. Yep? So you guys need to figure out why kids, young kids and families are leaving. Because I could tell you why, and you guys know why. But nothing's getting done. So start doing something.
So we have that shop class right behind school here, right between school and gym.
Yeah, I get it right.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, why can't we do something with that to encourage kids? Because what I understand- Correct. It does not even utilize to its potential. Utilize it. From what I understand, it hasn't been used to its potential in a lot of years. I think if you have a welding class, you're gonna find an overwhelming response, that kids wanna do that. Knowing that if they go to community and they get a certification for welding, they can make 30 to 70 bucks an hour. And only do a year, six months to a year, as far as I see, once they have the knowledge here. Now, if revenue went wrong, being a charter school, you just have to have a subject matter expert in the field. You don't have to have a full-on teaching license to create it to a shop class.
Okay, there's a special way to get certified classes in our schools. That has been explained.
So with this community that has a lot of construction, a lot of logging, a lot of mechanics, there's a lot of trades in this area. I especially know a couple certified welders that are doing nothing right now. Their business got shut down during COVID. You know, that would be a great opportunity to put something out and be cause bolted that you will- Because those are just looking for certified welders to teach high school kid classes. Gotta start there. Put the word out. This is what our intentions are, piece of our plans. I know Colton, my boy, he wants to learn welding. I've been teaching him at the house. He's interested in building stuff out of wood. He's using routers, table saws at the house. But he wants to go above and beyond that. He wants to learn from somebody else. And me as a dad, and not only as a youth sports coach, I love that one other kid get taught by other parents, other people that have the subject matter experts. I'm all for that. There's more than one way to get the job done. It's more than one way to change. We gotta spread the word in the community, down to all of our students, even in the outline areas that we are looking to implement these courses. NRC is a great thing. Don't get me wrong, I love it in our school. You know, what you guys have done in our school is great, but we gotta expand on it. If we're losing kids, we gotta bring them back. Utilize the buildings we have. I'm sure Ron, he might offer some stuff.
You guys can't sit there and talk. You need to come up here and speak, please.
But like, the pilot and Russian, you know, if they're flashing, they're not moving, so they're flashing, they're not aware. They're full of pilot question, you know, they're cleaning up around the house, so. You can start their classroom, they're probably wanna be, you know.
They actually are on, um, 18. And I-
You know, I'm frequently, I like it right here, saying, you know, it's about helping people learn. And to get that started, you have to go to find people who are really important kids, and have a good focus. So I'll give you a couple of examples that are starting right this morning. We have a crew of about eight to 10 kids, sophomore, senior, seniors. We're gonna be framing in the upper breast of the town. All of our pieces of getting the foundation. And we have a grant that, that they're working two-hour shifts, and some of them doing some other stuff. All the rest of the quarter, we'll, 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 we'll finish. And the grant is, is that we could project, they actually will learn spiking to go on, so it actually counts. And the challenge that I see up here, because our school has been so small, to give kids dreadful ways to apply to their party, but also a resume and how to create a work schedule, so they can actually get a job somewhere they can pass on. The welding thing is an interesting one, because we have this lab of four degree welding stations. We actually have some welding projects now that they are staying on, just to finish the second gate, and they're relining all the gates and all of that. And there are two people that I have talked to about, they didn't help with that project. The challenge is, sometimes their health is not in a position where they can align with our nighting schedule. But nonetheless, that is one of the projects we've got. This, this year, we changed, for many years, the senior contract, one for 40, taken a couple classes, a couple lessons, gone. What we found here, where they depend how bad, where they left here. It's like you worked really hard, freshman, sophomore, junior year, senior year, post. Now, I think you all might think that, it may have been some posty things, years that they're here, but it's too much there. Our kids were losing all that. And so we adjusted our schedule. We have, we're actually, we're trying to create some, create some micro juniors. Right now, we have students who are, one of us, first job is a senior. He's pumping gas, or whatever, they're 40s. Gotta be a clock, gotta earn out of, count your money, gotta get the credit card, gotta work the customer, all of that. Those seem like really small steps, but they're really big for kids who live in this small town where, where you don't have meals, how many people's experiences. What I would say, and I think this has been the hardest thing for me to see, with the pandemic, all the crowds, I already told about it. They really created this chism between our families and what happens here on this campus. And we launched volunteers. We have people who wanted to volunteer, but the state of Paul Smith's would not allow that, unless they wanted to fight the state. A few districts did that, and they lost. And so now, I, I want to build back the relationship, so that we can be working on things that make a difference. Which is why I really appreciate, when I see business people in the community, who are able to come and work on projects alongside for the benefit of our kids. Because our kids need to see that the kid that goes to school has parents involved in the community. I would say, my other concern is, because of the loss of law enforcement in this town for the last couple of years, some really bad stuff's going on out there. And our campuses are a hated safe place, except when there's behavior control. But, but, but that's something on our community, it doesn't matter to school. And so we need federal support, or federal pressure on families, when kids are way out there. They don't have all the resources, you know, that. Just because we weren't there for the kids, it's conceding. We're there now, and we have. And it's how do we grow a community that together, their families, parents are working alongside? And that is not criticism. It's a, it's a reality of what we all are. How do we build that foundation? So I, I have parents who come, their kids, their, their whole family units, and really what's written in the environment that they're leading from. My concern is, A, no, I don't know this about my kids, but say, now, one, you can make decisions about where to go to school. But this town, where there doesn't even have a school here that's functional and serves kids and families, otherwise, it's happening. Watch the housing turnover, you know, there's a national attrition that occurs as some years go by. Each one of those is an opportunity for a young family to come up here, but if we don't have healthy environment, that to deal with, housing's pretty cheap though, for what I'm aware of here. We won't attract this man. There's not much hope there, it's, they're almost all out of students. The kid, the kid time, all of them school, the younger kids are, you're losing their time.
Yep, definitely.
So the great idea is that we would more for the kids.
Right.
We won't have that actually. You're losing them. Over whether it be the policy from the state, or I'm not sure exactly how it works, but it's failing miserably. I did add that.
I do wanna talk about our discipline chart. Yes, I would like to speak on our discipline chart. I don't have it in front of me, but I also pulled it up. And I am confused at a few things. Number one is how, how many offenses do you get to have? And when does it restart? We don't have like a, a starting and a stopping point. Is this like per week, you could have six offenses? Is it per year? Is it per, like, chip, like, group, whatever, what is the time limit on six offenses? Number, number two, six offenses is a lot for another kid to take. If you are sexually harassing and bullying another student, you get six times before there's either a full expulsion or a suspension. The other thing I'm confused about is, in my day, when you got expelled, you were gone. We have a child that got expelled last year for bringing a weapon to school. I know there's extenuating circumstances, but per our guidelines, it's expulsion. I know she came back, and that's okay, because we, apparently there were some things that had to get worked out, but to me, when is enough enough for our kids? When is it done? I understand the talking and the loving on these kids, because a lot of, there's some, a lot of trauma with families. But by keeping, keeping kids here who are doing offense after offense, whether they live up here or down the hill, offense after offense, making the educational home, which is their classroom, such a difficult place to learn. You are losing families of business owners in our area, and we are dealing with the repercussions of kids who have no boundaries with their stu-, with other students, with teachers, and we are not teaching that, and guess what? They're not getting it at home either. And what, whatever we're doing is not working. It's not. My child asked me again, after an incident today in her class, why does it even matter to have rules when no one follows them? What's the point? There's a lot of talking going on, and not a lot of stuff being actually done. I'm really thankful that we have Karina in the, in the school right now, because it is chaos over in seventh grade. And if you weren't there, we would have, I don't know what we would do with, with the seventh grade. We would, I, I don't even know what to, to do with the seventh grade, but I suggest highly, and I know I've gotten a lot of pushback from this, you need to divide that class. If you do not divide that class, they will self-implode. They're doing it, and they've been doing it all year. We have two students who refuse to come to school because of the hostility, aggressiveness, and anxiety-provokingness of that class. We cannot continue this. It will blow up. That class is a, is a perfect example of needing to divide the gang. It needs to be divided. I, I don't know what to do about teachers when it comes to that class, because at this point, there is not a ton of education going on, because the classroom's so hostile. It's bad. It's actually, and I know people have seen difficult classrooms, but it's the worst classroom I've ever seen. And we need to make sure that our kids know that they are, they can come back from this, but there is a big responsibility on them. And they need to take responsibility for some choices that they've made. And there needs to be some repercussions.
Um, with the amount of students that are leaving, that have left, as a school board, do we have a set number of students that we need to stay open? Do we have a number at which jobs start getting cut when we get to a certain level? I mean, are those numbers available, or are they known? We don't have a lot of other options from, we're already a charter school. What happens next? And so, those are important questions.
It's based on history, the number probably. It's early. And that's part of the reason we're changing the charter school. The, the real to the limits, we're already taking, we're, we're in a high school position, I think. Or, we, we, we're great teachers, or someone like this too. And at the open entry, we got, we could, we brought up actually the table for the position. And so we have a good soundboard. But it's, we're now in positions this year. So it isn't about, you can go along and enclose, it's sort of this trail of custom. And as we've been balanced, you know, try to cover services, it's somewhat difficult for adults, for kids. Actually, you see, fewer adults per grade. And so the, the, the combined classes, like we did in the three, four, four, five, like you were trying to- Like you were trying to.
Unfortunately, as the number decreases, we have the less ability to hire teachers to teach the electives that we want. We have less bodies on campus to take care of the students who don't follow rules, who choose to make poor choices and, and need consequences. I mean, we're in this spiral right now.
And I'll tell you the other challenge is. It's in our charter. The reason why this school. Not after our kids left. Our district, our district. So we pull some kids up right out of the go here. They would say, I'm going to be all for. So.
How many kids that live within the Butte Falls area? That don't come to our school?
Hey, so when I, I look at the book here, those other seven kids, it's totally in our connection. That's how many possible kids could come? Possible. It's a homeschooler. After COVID, we had some people who went to online and they just, they're not capable of that. And that's the problem. The state of Oregon, that's now thirty thousand students across the state because there's.
Do we know though? Do we, do, as a school board, do you know how many available students are out there that we don't have? We're not currently teaching? In our district? I mean, homeschoolers is one thing, right? But online students are another.
We have some other students who for safety reasons have left our school because for safety reasons, they made it unsafe. And we don't want something. And so they went for some of their options and they're on that journey.
Mm-hmm.
And they just live in town. They, part of it is our, I have other things on this campus for that. Because we have some, so young people in our, people are not, they're, they're online or they're not at school. But the break on school, there'd be people such a thing, right?
Well, that's, that's, but that's not what, I mean, that's, that's not. Yeah.
If we're going to serve kids in our community, we got to figure out how to serve them or hit a direct. And, and I go back to the issue of law enforcement. The issue of some, uh, some residents at this community where really bad stuff's going on and there's no accountability. And so. How do we form as a community a response to that? For, for the school district, on first call, it appeared kind of way that's about ninety eight space of the doors and trespassing intercelling people in the yard. That's not so fun because they live near the students.
I, yeah, I, I.
You're asking about kids.
Yeah.
I have kids in our district.
Yeah.
I have, and then I have some as they've gotten older in our, in our high school. Has, has shrunk or optioned or think hard to go ahead, they want to.
Yeah.
What's the number of kids that they're bringing up in the balance that they've got this reason to balance?
Well, if they did expel them, they have to take that possible because they can't hold. Uh, I would say.
Wait, wait, is that expelled last year? We can't accept this year or is that expelled this year?
For, for a year. It's, it's, it's a common. I wouldn't speak to a specific issue that is spoken about. There's a state law that we cannot expel, it's a great fire wall. You can't. If you look at the discipline chart, there's a, that's just how it's a state law. So what do we do when we have an older child who's out? We have to figure out major plans, strategies that get on campus, but early there's some other issues going on. And if, and if it's a special needs fees, then we have to ask for support. Or we work to help the parents get them some where they're appropriate. The large district is more likely to have a whole person. So, so it's the, it's the challenge, like even with the discipline chart, is it's not on size itself. Like every month. No, maybe in high school or middle school, it's something really stupid or foolish. And if we expel them for the rest of your school life, they just get drunk. But it's how do we, how do we get a counsel? How do we get support? And so it's, it's, it's not just spell, it's about they're still our community. What else is there?
It's, do they have counseling or use other shows like that?
We have worked the last four years to get counseling. I have emails, first of all, was a shortage of counselors. We finally just shared with the independent counselor, they have come here and working with the clinic, they opened back up. They hired a, a counselor and then that person got back and got a case spoke because we had to be there. And the, the, the benefit of that using the clinic is that we can get counseling for the kid from school out. If many times parents may get counseling outside of school day. And so particularly for older kids, in some cases, the counselor would actually over here. And then basically where the, the southern orthopedic was able to hire what's called a major intervention specialist. Who, who plays a different role in terms of determining what's going on. So this year, that piece has been built in here, but it's been four years to meet. And it cost money. It certainly is an investment. It helps to make use of money because organ health plan or other resources to go to explain for that. So that our resources go to the classroom. But like in other key healthcare environments, the mobility of people, whether those are people just saying, I don't want to do this. It's hard, but we're going to be there, it's hard to do this. That's the challenge. And so what would encourage or propose someone to make that professional investment and serve this community? Well, let's get into these partnerships, like we got with the clinic, like we have a plan. But we keep the help. Uh, we've seen a significant uptick in the last six months of kids who are down. But we also have parents who, who prefer to use that. And I will tell you, if a student is fourteen or whatever, they prefer themselves. Yeah. And so we do have some kids who are referring themselves. That's, that I was possible, but not in this situation. And having not been in public schools, they would just be out there. Please.
My question to you guys is.
We actually buy it. No, I don't stand up because they're, they're.
I got three scores, like yes, sorry.
All right. Okay, my question to you guys would be. As a school district, what is your main focus? Is it these troubled children who are time and time again, breaking the rules of the school? Um, continuously getting into trouble, disrupting the classroom and the peace of the kids that are here trying to learn and wanting to be at school? Is that your main focus? Or is it the kids that? Come to school, do their work, keep their head down, want to have an education? Because I will tell you, we have four kids. As of right now, in your guys' school district. Uh, last month, we had issues with two of our kids. Um, with bullying, threatening, that type of thing. Our kindergarten daughter refuses to come to school. It is a battle every single day for me to get her out of bed, get her dressed and get her to school. And have her stay the entire day because she doesn't feel safe. Kids are not nice to her. And I will be the first to tell you, we don't coddle our children, we don't baby them. Um. But for me to see her struggle the way she is and for me as a parent. To not feel like I'm getting the support that I should from the school is very aggravating. And when she is coming home from school and she is so upset and. I don't even know how the school day goes where she is throwing fits and telling her family that she hates us because this is the. The attitude she sees in class. I, I want to see something done or I'm going to have to fool her too. And I don't want to do that because trust me, I am not a homeschooling mom. I have tried that and it is not good. So, um, I, I would really like to know. Is there a balance? Do you guys focus more on the troubled students? Do the students that, you know, go to school, keep their head down, they're well behaved? Do they get the same attention? Because as a parent looking in, it doesn't seem like it. Yeah. Thank you.
I want to thank the show up. Chair of the commission of rights, the, 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 the witness. But it is your. If I could have that. But I also know that in each schools, people have had a search to, we have missed the change of. Turn. And one of the ways to do that is to have that to be that. So, so you mentioned the ANRC. I do think that is a plus in that, that that is a place where kids and their parents become, we're both things together and have interactions. Parents can see other things that are business. And for some people, they have a much specific mission for their kids who are struggling. That's the place where we. Because it, it, it is our responsibility to try to help. It is our responsibility to try to. And when we grow and roll up, we start to apply. It's how do we live with it? Right now, we're down to teacher. We've been able to provide some classes for one. Her suggestion about providing some other classes. But our principle this week is actually, we're attempting to pull back in that great classroom. Because we're. What I, what I've been interested in alongside that is. Whatever we want, how do we reduce? And recognizing that some people are going to make a choice. Because there are a lot of people that are great. Yet. We want to be a place that people say. Where we're really focused.
Something that would help me as a parent would be when you guys make the decision of what to do in the instance, like in seventh grade. If you would let us know before, like what kind of your? I know Karina and I, you and I have talked, but I kind of want to see it written down. So I know what to expect. So the kid, I can talk about it with my daughter and I can feel like, okay, this is something that is doable. And so that I can see what it is going forward. Because right, like what the plant? Yeah, because I think, and I think. I think parents want to know. I, just the communication part, I think would really help me understand going forward. So that I can be on board also because. Ultimately, we, we do love our school and we love our community. We want to, we want to better the community and the school that resides in it because this is a big part of the life of a lot of people here. And so it would help me communication wise to have a plan that we know so that we can. So that we know it. I, I just, I feel, and maybe that's selfish. I just feel like I would feel better about it if I could see a plan in place for these kids. That's it.
So, uh. They, right, so. And then they are said by. I have, I was saying. Should be. But. It's here, the last year. It's, I see this way out here. You know. Studio. That's the way. But I see. So. They have. And. And. They, uh. They're. They, uh, they also have. I, I still. So. But maybe.
Has it not been consistent for the last year?
Well, because. They, they totally. Yeah.
So they.
Would you be vertical?
Yeah.
Well, I don't have any tech, but I see. It's been a little. Because teachers that. These weird situations, expulsion, partly it's a little. That. But this. Here. There's the rules that we have. There's. They have. So some of those are being done and not being done. We. And.
Can I answer your question? I'm different.
So.
It has not been possible here for a percent.
Yeah.
It has a lot of places we see it constantly here. That is probably our biggest concern. Have other.
Basically, look. Sure, our. See concentration. Have. Self-recreation. Not just, just their cool. We have. Oh, yeah. Great day where. But they. It's not composed. It's just like. I see. They're just. Firm. You know, why? Why? We have to serve. Because. It's. This is a short. It's. A. That's not only. It's so. And I'm sure it's not sad that. Always wise. Have. Maybe that's some. Have. Absolutely. Have. Small. The observation. So. Absolutely. Have. That was. And. Charlie. There's a hole. So. Four. There's a. They want. Hold on. I just. So. That's like. Yeah. So. It's. Yes. Which is. Possibly. Which. So.
I. How? How can we? How can we as a school, as a whole producing adults? We want to save. We cannot. How can that be a future goal? So right in. We want to DC. So, so let's, let's think about that. What the goals, what you get done and what you're working with in, in dealing with law enforcement. When I heard you, this book and I, you said something about the relationship with your kids. Um, the process. That does not happen. And so part of the challenge that we have as a municipal community is what, what role do we play regarding family? And is, is part of that, that refining the process, is it us being able to be innovative or is the cost too high that it seems? And I'm not judging the people, either way they choose, that ultimately would come down to if everyone pulls just for what they need. We, public schools will be left with the kids who don't. We've seen some of that. Uh, both of us charted over thousand. Home search. Pulse man from Holland. Did you know we are a family that all the way to South Memphis sent their kids here? You know, it's kind of what families need, the purpose to be. What I, what I challenge for us is in a community where we've lost some really important supports that are important to the health of the community. It's how we grow this path. One of the ways you can do that is you have a health plan and you have counseling and it's stable and you, you acknowledge children in the community that counseling actually helps. But it actually does. Along with that, you have a lot of force, you also have families involved. And I'm not, it's not a guilt term, I know, but I remember. On the other side, very hard conversation around that. But the reality is the goal was first to survive. We need to figure out how to, because it's not viable. That's what the whole experience would be. The ugly, ugly memory of, of all the decisions that have been made about society is really impacting all communities. I don't want that. So, so it's how, how do we?
Everybody here in the board has mentioned public safety. We all know here, there is no law enforcement except for Jackson County Sheriff, but it takes us two hours. Just to respond, if they respond. Have you as a board approached the mayor? First Callahan had said, these are what we need to produce quality students. We need public safety.
On behalf of, on behalf of the board, I have had that conversation. For this mayor and previous mayor, and for three years, we actually used some grants to help subsidize the police officer. And that, one of the things that I asked the board in our latest plan that we submitted is I would put that on, that if we're able to hire a police officer, we use grants. Some, some of I tried because we need this to go.
It is not about the doctor calling, I actually. Yeah. Our current thing is working very hard, uh, trying to hire, want to hire a full-time police officer. Uh, she is constantly facing that type of pressure, trying to get a job. Or she is currently seeking for help of a bigger police officer. The bottom line is that we have enough money to operate the property.
And. So why don't we look at an alternative law enforcement and have a state certified security force out there? Road security force.
Look at that, turns out that was.
When your parents carry the officer at twenty-two dollars an hour versus the sheriff that we get forty-eight in our county.
They were charging us for like vehicle equipment, my evidence, like that, that issue. More expensive than I think we were.
But I think your point is the school district can't do it by itself, the city can't do it by itself. Kind of the two other partners. We had an incident this last week where two grounds were cited on our property. You know what? That finally triggered something that got some stuff wrong. But I after a while, I'm with people, Dr. Gentland was assaulted by one of them, he was pressed charges because people had been concerned about. What we need to do is we will play our role in terms of pushing on trespass, disorderly conduct, harassment. If we can make the case, then we'll, we'll picture kids are charged for them. But we need to push the boundaries. I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get the boundaries around campuses so that I can have kids walk from here to there without certain threats. I need for the library to be able to say to certain people, you're not welcome on our property, dis- disorderly conduct, we trespass. And, and if I get those citations, then that expands the same for personal. And absolutely for city park, that's a city thing. We have certain young people, the lightest of the community who are harassing, citing, trying to, or start fights with kids. They, they bad from the park, we just need to push it out, but no one enters here who can do it. It has to be, everyone's saying, retire, we're not going to do this. And, and pushing the boundaries because what will happen is law enforcement will be with those kids, even the sheriff's department. But until you get the citations, they stay and then they communicate to other kids. When I heard somebody say that was on our class, that's what picked up until our beginning to other kids. So, so I, I appreciate you bringing these things forward because I do think it might be important for us to figure out strategies and how we can exert that pressure collectively. So that retirees up here are afraid to press charges without someone beating them up because they don't know good enforcement. And sadly, there are law enforcement, right now is unless something serious happens or there's a serious citations. My response, that's just. Like that, but even with laws up there. Right? And so that, it should be outweighed.
Um, I just want to kind of piggyback on that. I feel like. The school system is failing in that situation as well. We're talking about kids being scared if somebody's going to do something to them. Well, that's because they see, okay, we're going to make death threats two in one week and nothing's going to happen. There's no suspension, okay, you lose fifteen minutes of recess, but what is that teaching them? Oh, I got a slap on the wrist now, so two years down the road, nothing happened then, so maybe if I bring a gun, then you know, nobody will even think twice about it. So I feel like that really falls back on the school system and having policies in line. And putting their foot down and following through with those and having stricter rules for those types of things. I know that I had a conversation with you and you said, you know. Those are held very seriously, uh, threats with a weapon are in their own category. Uh, my daughter and another, her friend were threatened on the high school campus with a stick. And that stick was involved in the threat, which now makes it a weapon because there is no description of what a weapon is. And nothing was done. And you know what I was told when I came to the school and, and told them about it is I had one person tell me, oh, well, he was on the sidewalk, so that's fine. Um, oh, it was after school, so that's fine, sorry it happened, but you know, that's fine. So I feel like as a school, we need to come together and have policies in order and hold these kids and parents accountable for those. If we want to have a good community and not have chaos running around.
Um, we've talked a lot about the disciplinary chart, okay, and I've looked at it, we've looked at it. Um, I don't know if anybody has a copy of it right here, but it's all falls in line with keeping track. It's first offense, second offense, third offense, fourth offense. How as a school, as administration, are you keeping track of every single student and every single offense by every single employee? If that's what we have to go on for these kids to walk through this with them and, and produce good, you know, solid, safe adults. How are we, does every single employee, every single day, write down about every single student that had an offense? So that we can look back and say, okay, this is number six now from different adults to different kids, this person's now had six. How does the administration keep track if that's the only way? And then how much emphasis do you allow per employee for, well, that's just that kid or that's just, they have issues or, or that's their home life? How do we keep track of that? If that's how we, if that's how we deal with offenses, how do we keep track of that?
But we do have a process. One more time, we do have a process. Uh, whether it's a. And again, it has to do with on that chart, the seriousness of that, but it's issued by staff. That denotes what the perceived interaction was. And then that goes to, uh, at the elementary, it goes to the disciplinary. Slash. We have not had this. It doesn't mean that we haven't had test occasions.
But it's a, it's a progressive chart, so.
Correct.
Multiple lower level offenses who's up on the chart, but if one teacher doesn't talk to another teacher, doesn't talk to another advisor, uh, employee out of the playground. I don't know, how's anybody supposed to know that, okay, now this student.
Because those referrals come into the.
I'm not saying that.
Just, but what are you talking about?
Disciplinary action from first level offenses, second level offenses. They're progressive, they're growth.
So you're saying they have to have a referral. Yeah.
Well, no, I don't know, I'm not saying that, if you look at that.
Chart.
If you look at the chart, depending on the behavior, there are many things that are teacher intervention person. The teacher acts, they know what they do, they initiate their referral, that starts the risk.
But if they didn't do it today, that teacher got out of the playground. We all know as parents, a lot of offenses now, they're being watched by other. Do they work in offense? Maybe not at a referral, but I know that lots of parents felt like.
It was.
He's been there. We, we have our kids. Nothing gets talked about, nothing gets written down.
Well, I would say some gets talked about, but I don't think they're ridiculous. Because, you know, the, the, that goes back to the, as we truck as a school, we have as many staff members. Staff that goes out and we actually. And it, and that is their safety. Totally agree.
So we do have staff leaders, so maybe they did a point to make sure they know that maybe things like this is going on, this is how we track it. We need to make sure we're all on the same page.
I, I know high school, especially staff, I would make it available to you and talk to the classified employees who are out of the playground. Of those steps, of the, and I'm documenting it. I, what I do know is it becomes rather faster and it's probably not every single infraction. They're really built. And when you're dealing with a really serious thing, there may be something else that is a good tendency, just because of the few people we have. I will also tell you on that chart, I have in some instances, some kids that are having it well before that chart would have been. Just to make sure this to be here. And generally, one or two instances, the parents told them, they saw. It, what it was was that their kid's out of control. So, so the chart is a guide, there's some discretion there, but I, I could tell you, I couldn't look in the face and tell you that we have very simple infraction. Because if we did that, it would be the weekend. So it's about how like that works.
Or. So. It's some. I saw. It's not. Or. Are they? Should. Which. So. So. By how. Just. That means. That's issue. Off to. Or. So. The. Staff. Even if it's. Are.
And yes, and I would say sometimes you'll see it in your, in your, the words just like in the fall, and we could get a plant and it disappears. And the life of that kid, that's a, that's a different than a high school. You know, have over a couple of years, you see there's, there's an issue. So, so that is the discretion. Every guy who's struggling with that, we need to, one help from the school, you don't want to just say, it's your problem, right? Because clearly there's some. Some bad. So, so that is, that is. When it comes to the kidnapping rap. That's, that, that is the. And so if it's down to us looking at the kids who are grabbed. It's a, the.
Yeah. Well, it's not.
And so, and so why we use. Well, that's hard. You all have experienced this about so long. It's hard. We're, we're not the guys. And it's basically. Okay, we'll walk later. Let that. Very sad. Yeah. It's up here. Yeah. It's there, there you have it. When they have, when a student does this. We need to be responsive. That's a company. The spirit falls off. Give you all a chance to excuse, but it's not a problem, which is better.
One, two. One, two, three. All the grounds. Yeah.
They all, all, you learn, you guys follow. And. Um, I've been spot.
At.
I will be on. I, a lot, a lot of this is the, the first time. So.
I think. That has to be. On you. I don't have this. This, uh, it always be. Right. It's by the state. So. Don't worry. Something.
Come here.
It's. It's, it's. The most. You know, the. The, I guess, the hard fruit is the. There for. Someone. Learning. They want. If, if I don't even copy that, this is going to. Get, get rid of problems. So. So. At least that, that's.
That, that's. I'll say one thing, lack of resources, but not lack of love. We're all here to do the best we can and with your support, we can do it.
It's. Here. Y'all fellas. And, and I.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.